Mr. Enos.
Present.
Mr. Fiori is present. We have no student activities approvals this evening. Uh, we have a proposed bid award for the main entrance vestibules for Pole and Parker. Mrs. Moynihan.
On June 21st, we received one bid from Silver City Glass for the building of the vestibules within Elizabeth Pole School and Parker Middle School. As you can see there below, the vendor quoted $67,500 for Elizabeth Pole and Parker vestibule for $79,743, total bid amount for $147,243.53. I am recommending, um, awarding the building of the vestibules to Silver City Glass as they have bid and met all bid requirements. And just a reminder, earlier in the year, school committee voted to encumber $250,000 for the vestibules, and this would be covering that cost.
Motion to approve.
Uh, second on discussion. So the $250 was just for these two schools, Mrs. Moynihan?
Well, we had just started. That's when we started talking about the vestibules, and so at that time, we were just starting just maybe one or two, and we didn't know how much things were going to be. So the $250,000 unfortunately is only going to be able to cover two schools.
So, s- uh, just a question. You know how we have the ESAR money?
Correct.
Should we use ESAR before we encumber?
You can't use ESAR. ESAR III money is de- um, designated-
This wouldn't be considered capital?
No, it can't because ESAR III funds must be used for bringing students back into the school, and it's very difficult to do security under ESAR III.
Oh, this is considered security even though it's capital? I got you. All right, I got you.
Okay, move this baby seconded to approve the bid awards. Is there any discussion? Hearing on all the favors, think about by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, all those opposed, so voted. And, uh, bids for the Oakland campus paving.
So, in your packet, you have a memo that, um, if you are aware that many of our buildings, of course, we have to go ahead and do some more, um, capital improvements for our district. But right now, as we see fit for right now, the most, um, pertinent one that needs to be done is the Oakland campus. We received two quotes, and it is for the entrance to the Oakland campus. So again, going into the building where Friedman and Chamberlain is housed, and then the Friedman's bus drop-off area is in need of repaving. Director of Facilities, Mark Freitas, requested quotes from three companies. Two companies re-submitted quotes, and below you will see, First Company, Hyde Paving, um, quoted $92,000, and LAL Paving is $149,335. I am recommending that we offer the contract to Hyde Paving as they submitted the lower of the two quotes, and the funding source will be the facility's rental revolving account. So please know that this is just one of it, and we will be updating our capital improvement plan for long-range planning, which will also be putting in, um, additional work in many of our schools that need, um, parking lot enhancements.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And I note that this is-
Hyde Paving, I'm sorry, awarding is Hyde Paving.
Second.
I would note that this is probably about the longest drive that we, we have in our, our schools. I know we have a couple of other long ones, but, um, Oakland is really significant, particularly where there are two schools there, so. Any further discussion? Hearing on all the favors, think about by saying aye.
Aye.
If you vote aye, all those opposed, so voted. Use of facilities.
Use of facilities, again, just a note of information where we had, um, one that's just passed, um, Citizens for Citizens using just the parking lots at Taunton High School, and Boy Scouts of America using Benjamin Friedman Middle School's cafeteria. We do this every year with them. Fee is waived in lieu of community service at the school.
Received and placed on file.
Second.
Motion made seconded, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, all those opposed, so voted. ADA update.
Quarter four, um, Kevin Scanlon asked for quarter four updates, and as you have seen here, um, I have included notes for all remaining ADA items that need to be addressed by TPS, which includes the construction of new playgrounds during the 2023-2024 school year. As you can see here, um, looking at the ADA memo, the very beginning of it, the first part will show the responsibilities of Taunton Public Schools, where we still have about 38 remaining, um, which is only 8.17%. And then on the second page, the, those remaining items, I've listed there, and, and listed the notes, what is, um, what we will be doing and the timeframe for them.
Received and placed on file.
Uh, second on discussion. So, um, of course, watching a lot of the city meetings, there's a lot of discussion on ADA and all that stuff. So, what, what does it take for us to complete the outstanding, what, 38 items? Is it, um, is it manpower? Is it, uh, dollars? What is it?
I don't have the full report in front of me, so I don't want to go ahead and say on some, but I know like at the first, um, on some of them, it is to deal with the playgrounds, but again, playgrounds will be covered, um, and that was done and discussed a while back when we did the long-range planning, and that will be some. Other things are on our end, if here, it says, like on one of them here, um, for Summer Street, school is only being used for offices only. One of the items that they listed in the report, it's been if we are using the playgrounds and pathways, that is no longer being used. The school is only being used for, for that. And then there are other things that we aren't able to identify because there's, it's vagueness in the report.
Okay, so I, I mean, my, my hope is that we could just clear up the 38 outstanding items, which I think is a small task, uh, and, and the one that you just mentioned, the Summer Street School, that there seems to be some confusion of, you know, the responsibility and what the use is for. Maybe we can clear that up, and now we're down to 37. So, uh, I know that, you know, everybody's busy, but if we can kind of just get that out of the way, and that way, we don't have to deal with this any further. I think that's much recommended, so.
If I could just make an area, just for, uh, just a reminder or a point of clarification, looking at the last column, that is the last items that we need to do to address. There's only 4.5 items. That was totally Taunton was 38. Now we're only down to 4.5 remaining items open. That's the last column.
Even better. Even better.
So again, at Chamberlain, there are three items that will be fixed when we construct the playground. ETES, again, to be constructed, the playground. Um, Summer Street, like I had just mentioned, uh, Letty Preschool Playground is to be fixed for this coming up this school year. The Parker remaining one, again, that's one that we can't note and understand where it's located in the report. And then at Taunton High School, the accessible route to the baseball field is complete, and the soccer will be complete in the near future. So as you can see, it's really just 4.5 items, not 6.5 that we would do.
Even better, Mrs. Moynihan. Thank you so much.
Chief of all.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted. Then we have two bills payable warrants. First, fiscal year '23 in the amount of $316,909.60.
Motion to approve.
Second on discussion, uh, first through you, Mr. Chairman. Mrs. Moynihan, on page 10, Powers &amp; Sullivan, Business Finance Contract Services, $12,000. What, what's that for?
That is our end-of-the-year audit report.
Audit report. Okay, so no more Sahidi and SAG or Sis-
Well, it doesn't mean that we're not going to use them, but this is the one that the city had, had, had us use, and that's-
It makes it easier to use the same one because they're familiar with the city, so.
Many of the items that they, and I will report in the future. Many of the items, they just said it was reported this way. It was very quick.
Yeah.
I don't always agree with that, but that's okay. You answered my question, thank you. And on, uh, voucher number 20672, uh, in the amount of $6,014, I'd like to be recorded as voting present on that, Mr. Chairman. That's Pride Inc., which I serve on the board of directors and on the finance executive team.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Hearing on all the favors, think about by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, all those opposed, so voted. Then fiscal year '24 in the amount of $136,387.98.
Motion to approve in the amount stated.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted. And facilities update. I note that there's a report from, um, the dude.
Yes, this is the report that was submitted by the Director of Facilities, Mark Freitas, and again, it's just, um, so you can see how many, uh, open orders in Taunton Public Schools of the 58 buildings, 135 outstanding orders are still open. And again, that is just something that the, um, the director has been asked to provide us each month.
Motion to receive and place on file.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, we're out of here.
Thank you.
A second regular July meeting of the Taunton School Committee should come to order. Please rise for the pledge.
The flag of the United States of America and the republic to which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, benevolent, just as it is.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early night? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air? Gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Please remain standing. Secretary Fagan?
Yes. Lord, as we begin this session, let us acknowledge your goodness and mercy and ask your blessings on all our deliberations. We thank you for this opportunity to be of service to our community and to the young people entrusted to our care. And if you would please remain standing, we have, um, uh, some, I'm sorry. This is, yeah, we have three obituaries to read, but we're, I'm going to ask for a moment of silence for these three individuals who are all affiliated with the Taunton Public Schools. The first one is Kathleen, Kathy McKenna of Lakeville, who passed away on Wednesday, June 7th. She graduated from Bishop Cassidy High School. She continued at Bridgewater State University, earning a master's degree finally from Suffolk University. She retired as a special needs physical education teacher from the Taunton Public Schools. She was here for 31 years and volunteered her time as a Special Olympics coach at the, and at the Lakeville Council on Aging. She was an avid Boston sports fan, also enjoyed bowling, reading, being with family, and a devout Catholic, so she is our first one. She also leaves a brother, a sister, and several nieces and nephews. The next one is Mr. Robert Cornell, who passed away on January 12th, 2023. He was the husband of Mary Cornell, who was a retired Taunton educator. She was the lead instructor for Parker Middle School's Newcomer Academy, supporting English-language learners for seven years. He is survived by their two sons, his siblings, and several nieces and nephews. And lastly, this past week, on Monday, July 17th, we lost Janice Ann Interbatolo, who was a longtime secretary at Taunton High School. She, most of, most people, as a matter of fact, Mr. Barata was sharing with me that that was the first face most people saw when they first entered Taunton High School, and the first face every day. She leaves three children, Christopher, Michael, and Jillian, six grandchildren to who, which she was deeply devoted to. She was the longtime companion of Louis Macaruso. She's survived by a brother, sister, and several nieces and nephews. And just some additional information for her, she worked as a secretary for Father Costello at St. Mary's Church. She also went over and worked part-time in the English department as, at, as a secretary at Taunton High before becoming Matt Maddows, the headmaster's secretary at Taunton High School. Every one of us that knew her just really loved her. She was a wonderful person, and even in the saddest times of her life, she had the biggest smile on her face. So, um, I ask you prayers, thoughts and prayers for all these people, and, and to please remember them in your thoughts and prayers, and wish the community also to do so. Three wonderful people here. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Roll call, Secretary Fagan.
Mr. Plosky.
Present.
Mr. Enos.
Present.
Mr. Fiori.
Present.
Mrs. Fagan's present. Mr. George?
Present.
Mr. Alura is absent. Mr. Viera is absent, and Dr. DeMello, Chairman.
Present. Thank you. Uh, next up, we have the approval of minutes. Uh, we'll take June 7th of 2023. I wish the committee.
Second.
Mr. Enos, Mr. George, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, and we'll ask for the approval of the minutes from June 21, 2023.
Same procedure.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. And item C, we have public input. Secretary Fagan?
Hold, go ahead and read that.
Yeah, there you go.
Oh, you know what?
Here you go.
In accordance with the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 39, Section 23(c), we kindly request that individuals wishing to provide public input sign up in advance. A copy of the regulation and guidelines will be provided upon sign-up, and individuals will be asked to state their name and address for the record. The amount of time each registered individual will have to speak will be determined by the number of people who sign the register and will be announced prior to the start of the public input portion of the meeting.
Do we have any public input tonight, Ms. Barata? No, okay, no public input, thank you. Secretary Fagan. Next up, we have the superintendent's report. Tonight, we have with us, uh, this is Superintendent of Curriculum, uh, Mr. Chris Barata.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for allowing me to present Superintendent Cabral's report. He is away on a well-deserved vacation. First on, uh, first I'd like to say that his report is going to be all Taunton High School focused, starting off with Taunton High School in support of the efforts by Darla Hartung, Mike Reposa, Superintendent Cabral, this committee, and the whole CTE Department, that the high school's been awarded the Chapter 74 approval for the Construction Craft Laborers program. Some highlights, um, program was designed to meet the Mass General Law, Chapter 74, and Vocational, Technical, Educational Regulations, providing our students with high-quality, in-demand career and technical education options. Uh, part of our commitment to excellence was ensuring that, one, that our program abides by the framework set forth for the CTE programs, and also we have licensed individuals in those roles. Through the commitment of this committee and Superintendent Cabral and the high school, Commissioner Riley and Desi has approved our waiver as we continue to search for the most capable and strong technical instructor, instructor for the program. Our team at Taunton Public Schools believes that this program will be a unique opportunity for our students, giving them a chance to gain invaluable skills in the construction industry and prepare for promising careers. The second highlight of the high school is that Superintendent Cabral is honored to announce the new Assistant Principal for Taunton High School. This individual, Carolyn Bleno, uh, proceeded through the screening process, met the recommendations or the recommendation for hire came from Principal Holcomb. Mr. Cabral met with Ms. Bleno, is extremely pleased that she has been named Taunton High School's new Assistant Principal. She's an alum, a 1980, uh, 1998 graduate at Taunton High School. She brings a wealth of expertise dedicated back to her alma mater, where she intends to be an effective, positive change to enhance student learning experiences, and most importantly, raise student achievement. Before accepting this position, some of her background, she amassed an impressive career across multiple school districts and states. Sam Bernardino Unified District was located in California. She served as a mentor teacher, Science Department Chair, and was recognized as Teacher of the Year. She later joined Boston Public Schools as a teacher, instructional coach, and academy leader. Her impressive track record of achievement within Taunton Public School District includes a brief period she served as Assistant Principal over at Parker Middle School, and her most recent role, which we all recognize, as the director, the district's Director of Technology, where she led and spearheaded the efforts during the COVID-19 pandemic in terms of providing usable, functionable technology for not only our educators, but our students when they're home, uh, adopted and brought in high-quality electronic-based applications for student use, and supported teachers in the knowledge of how to actually use that work. Again, outstanding job at that point. Carolyn's connections with Taunton extends well beyond her professional role. She's married to Matthew Bleno, another dedicated Taunton Public Schools educator, who is in the Biology Department at the high school. They have three children, Mia, who is a recent graduate of Taunton High School, class of 2023, is valedictorian, Brayden, and Cameron, both THS students. Uh, Taunton Public Schools is looking forward to benefit from Ms. Bleno's expertise, passion, and dedication to education as her new role is Assistant Principal of Taunton High School. So congratulations, Carolyn. She, along with Dr. Buckley, will be coming to an August meeting because of conflicts and stuff, so we want to be able to present her to the committee, them to the committee and to the public. One final announcement Superintendent Cabral wanted to mention was that the high school continues to work on different ways to engage students beyond the regular school day and beyond the typical classrooms through the approval of the Esports Club that competed in Electronic Gaming Federation and Nationals. One of Taunton's High School's newest clubs, the Esports Club, took off an accelerated start in opening days in national gaming circuit. Two Taunton High School students, Nathan Legary and Zadine Ramosamando, competed in Electronic Gaming Federation Nationals Championships in Orlando, Florida, which took place June 16th through 19th, along with 44 other students from across the United States. Both those students received invitations to the Nationals by winning their regional playoff brackets during the regular season. At the Nationals, Nathan and Zadine advanced through play, ultimately placed ninth and seventh, again, a national-level ranking. We are incredibly proud of these students and their advisors for their noteworthy success in the first year of official operation of this club. The Esports Club advisor was Brent Borges, and he expressed pride and gratitude towards his students and departmental administration for overwhelmingly supporting this club's new startup. In the 2022-23 school year, the Esports Club saw over 30 registered and actively involved students at Taunton High School that represented all grade levels. They look forward to watching this new club grow and expand in Taunton High School and for the coming years, and also success on the national stage. Below, uh, included in your packet were some photos, or would have been some photos of the competition. And some other, uh, information that, uh, on the backside, I want to let you know about the sports teams, the women's softball and the men's hardball teams, some dates of importance that I also left on your dais. Wednesday, August 2nd, this here with the Finance and Law meeting, we'll be celebrating and welcoming the women's softball team and men's hardball team, along with their families and caregivers, for a catered meal. Sunday, August 6th, both teams will be recognized at Fenway Park. Our student athletes will be recognized for accomplishments while the Red Sox take on the Toronto Blue Jays. Game is scheduled for a 1:35 PM start. Tuesday, August 8th, THS teams, both of them, are invited to be recognized in front of city council. And as an aside, uh, new educator orientation, more information will follow, will be hosted in the district, uh, August 23, 24, and 25. That concludes Superintendent Cabral's report.
Thank you, Mr. Barata. Any questions, concerns? Uh, I just have a couple of comments. First and foremost, uh, big congratulations to Ms. Baptista in her new role. I know she's going to do a wonderful job, and, uh, of course, we like to breathe from, from within, so I think it's a perfect situation. And the other comment is regarding the Chapter 74 CVT programs. I was able to be at a presentation, uh, at the IBW Local 223 about a week ago, and there are so many opportunities for youngsters in pathway programs that exist. Uh, I actually connected two of the business managers, or finance manager, business manager, uh, with Superintendent Cabral so that he could pass it on to Ms. Hartung and Mr. Reposa so that, uh, we could move forward with that. And, you know, i- it's amazing that, you know, we, we have all these opportunities for our students. We all know that they're not all going to go to college, although that was always my, my hope, but they're going to go into the military, they're going to go into the trades, they're going to be homemakers and so forth. So just this opportunity, and it's right in the industrial park, that's the, that's the benefit of all this, you know? It's right in our backyard. So all this is very exciting and, uh, look forward to a great, uh, 23-24 academic year. What are the wishes of the committee? All in favor? Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you, Mr. Barata. Next up, we have Administrative Business Staffing Report. Uh, in your packet, of course, you have an enclosure. Any questions, comments? What are the wishes?
Received and placed on file.
All in favor? Uh, Mrs. Fagan?
There's been a lot of resignations in here. Do you have an update on how many positions we need to fill?
Actually, Superintendent Cabral's been in constant contact with HR. It's a fluid-moving target, and in August, he'll have more of an update because, one, we have vacancies that need to be filled by or potentially filled by external candidates, and we have a host of internal applicants bidding on positions within the district, and then it's a domino effect. So it's sort of a fluid state, and he's going to be prepared in August to present to committee a more definitive update in terms of real vacancies.
Uh, wishes of the committee? Was there a, uh, a motion to approve or accept?
Received and placed on file.
Okay. Seconded by Mr. George. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Next up, we have Subcommittee Reports, Finance and Law Chairman Fury.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Finance and Law Subcommittee met this evening with myself, Mr. Enos, and Dr. DeMello. There were no student activities to report on tonight. We, uh, voted to approve the awarding of contracts for the construction of the main entrance vestibules for Pole and Parker Schools to Silver City Glass, who, uh, was the only applicant that was highly qualified. Then, uh, also bids on the paving of the Oakland Complex Campus, uh, and, uh, it was recommended and voted to, uh, award that bid to Hyde Paving, which was the lowest responsible bidder. Uh, we received a report on use of facilities, and we received an update on the Americans with Disabilities Act. We're really down to only about four projects that, uh, were the responsibility of the school department, and three of those involved, uh, work to playgrounds, which is going to be, uh, accomplished later in the year. And, uh, we had two bills payable warrants, one for fiscal year '23 in the amount of $316,909.60, with, uh, Dr. DeMello being asked to vote present on an item from Pride, on whose board he sits, and then another for fiscal '24 in the amount of $136,387.98. And, uh, those were both approved. Then, uh, we received a, uh, facilities update, uh, which notes that there are a very large number of closed projects and only a few open projects that are being carried on our, uh, software that has been used to, uh, better keep track of the construction and maintenance projects. And, uh, then it was voted to adjourn.
Would you accept the report?
Second.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Seconded by Mr. George. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you, Chairman. Next up, we have new business. Uh, first up, we have the Taunton High School State Champion Softball and Baseball Team, seeing closure. I think Assistant Superintendent Barata, uh, briefly explained what's going to take place, but it's worthy of mentioning it again. What do you think, Mr. Barata? So.
Absolutely. This was, um, a memo drafted by Assistant Superintendent Moynihan to Superintendent Cabral. I'm writing a form of the activities and awards that are scheduled to take place as we continue to honor our championship softball and baseball teams for capturing the 2023 MIAA Division One State Championships. On Wednesday, August 2nd, 2023, both teams and their families will be honored during a special meeting at the Taunton School Committee. Our student athletes will receive certificates from the committee acknowledging their accomplishment during this recognition. In addition, attendees will be treated to a catered meal and a championship cake honoring both teams. This will be followed by an invitation to appear before the mayor and city council on Tuesday, August 8th. We are also coordinating a pre-game appearance at Fenway Park with the Boston Red Sox. Sometime prior to the end of the 2023 calendar year, both teams will again be invited before school committee to receive championship rings, championship jacket and tracksuit, and championship plaque and trophy. While much has already been done to honor our student athletes, more is still to come. All costs associated with celebrating and honoring our student athletes will be charged to the athletic revolving account. It should be noted that Athletic Director Mark Adovinelli, along with coaches and student athletes, took part today in designing their championship rings, along with the layout- And it should be noted that Athletic Director Mark Adovinelli, along with coaches and student athletes, took part today in designing their championship rings, along with the layout of what their coats or jackets are going to look like. Extremely excited, the boys' team went with the size five ring, which is the large one, and the women amped it up, and they're also going to the largest ring size as well, so.
Good.
You know, very excited for their accomplishments, and obviously, Mr. Adovinelli wants to be empower the student staff, having them actually design what their rings and outfits look like. So great news there.
Very creative, thank you, Mr. Barata. Any questions, concerns, that item? Nope. Next up, we have the Taunton Public Schools School Library Update, see enclosure. Mr. Barata, is that you?
Yes, it is, briefly, this committee and the superintendent, and along with our community, has been really staunch advocates reopening our libraries. We've had difficulty in finding qualified candidates, which is our first criteria. We've worked extremely hard to bring into the fold existing employees with the certification, and we were able to open up Elizabeth Poole, Mulcahy, and Chamberlain. Where we placed librarians, and also the Galligan-Bennett combination. We had two, two individuals left the district the end of June, our high school librarian left the district, and Mulcahy left as well. Active postings are going out, forward to Principal Holcomb and Assistant Principal Bleno, three applications, or three packets to review for the high school position. I'm working with the elementary principals to provide them with application packets of individuals that they can consider seriously for librarians. To balance this off, because the goal would ultimately be to open up our middle schools as well, understanding that we're having difficulty to fill certified, qualified candidates for the roles, Superintendent Cabral has decided we're going to bring in educational assistants as well to partner with our librarians to work opposite the assigned librarian. For example, Poole is going to be matched with Parker. Chamberlain is matched with Friedman, East Taunton with Martin. Bennett and Galligan will get one as well, because split between two schools, Mulcahy is large in student population, so we do not share that librarian with another school, it's almost like a standalone feature. This model will work, in that hypothetically, the first couple of weeks of school, the educational system will be paired with the librarian, get used to the building, for example, if we use Poole, for example, we'll hear, meet the teachers, understand the routines and expectations of that full-time librarian, and then go to the middle school, same acclamation process, at which time we probably look after the first month, they will go on their separate paths, so both libraries will be up and running. We've actually clearly defined structures in place where our librarians will meet and have met with each other, we're going to do so with our educational assistants as well. So we're very excited that within a short time, all our libraries will be open for our students to access. And as you notice, at the, the work from Superintendent Cabral, Assistant Superintendent for Finance Operations Brendan Monahan of this committee, we're actually replacing some of the furniture, and the reimagining of that, and you notice the space over here looks vacant, it's because unused tables were there, in which the librarians, talking with students and stuff, what would you like to see in here? They're bringing more flexible, student-centered materials. This is taking place here, it's taking place at the Galligan and Bennett experience, Chamberlain is getting their foot in the door to look at what they might have, and of course, Mulcahy's a beautiful space to begin with. So reopening of our libraries, re-engaging students who are excited, reimagining what libraries should be moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Barata, any comments? Mr. Fury, I know you're very passionate about libraries and have been a great advocate.
Happy to see the progress.
Great, excellent, anybody else? Okay, next up, we have the School Committee Planner, at your table, you found another copy, which, there was a typo of some dates, or?
Yes, on the second page, with the School Improvement Plan presentations. In the draft I provided Superintendent Cabral, I neglected to change the dates, because if you notice, we're accelerating our presentations to the school committee. So you know right out of the gate what we're doing in each individual school, because they bleed over into spring, and by that time, the year is gone. So I erred in, in providing this copy to Superintendent Cabral earlier, because originally, items five and six, the December sixth and December twentieth, had two thousand, twenty-four dates on it, and we changed it back to twenty-three. So I apologize for that, so it's an updated calendar for your records.
So that means please use the one that's at your table, and disregard the others that you have at home. So on the new business, do we have any motions that needed to be taken on all those items, or just move on? Mr. Fagan, nothing? Nothing? Okay, great. Next up, we have unfinished business, action item updates, first up, we have job descriptions, third reading. First up, we have the Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. And since the third reading, do we need a roll call on this? I believe so, correct? Okay, Mr. Secretary Fagan.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes no. Mr. George?
Yes.
And Chairman DeMello?
Yes. Four, one, motion does not carry. Next up, we have Communication Coordinator. Secretary Fagan on a roll call vote, that's also a third reading.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Dr. DeMello?
Yes. That's five-nil, motion carries. Thank you. Next item up, we have Action Item Update, see enclosure. I did take a brief look at this earlier this weekend, and I don't see any items to be removed, any of my colleagues have any comments?
The reschedule of school committee retreat, is that?
School committee retreat is on the planner, I believe. Think you can get rid of that one? Mr. Barata?
August twenty-first.
I'm sorry? August twenty-first, correct. So we'll leave it there until we complete the, the item. Thank you, Mr. George for pointing that out. Anything else that we need to act on? Seeing none, we'll move on. Mr. Fury?
One item for unfinished business. At the beginning of our, our meetings, we always acknowledge the passing of people associated with our system. We also had a recent passing of a very distinguished neighbor of ours who I think needs to be acknowledged. Chris Kilarducci was a member of the Berkeley and Somerset Berkeley School Committees for over thirty years, and was a life member and board member of Mass Association of School Committees. I know he had a tremendous impact on his town and on the state educational system and school committees, and I'd just like to acknowledge and thank him for all his years of service.
Well deserved, thank you, Mr. Fury. Press time, I don't see any press in the audience, and wishes of the committee on the adjournment motion.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, have a good night, enjoy the weekend.